A large crowd. Nearly 600 volunteers came to help out and between 3,000 to 4,000 people attended the event throughout the day. Volunteers included local community members along with celebrities.
It isn't a holiday for me unless I've come down here to share. And this is the biggest gift to yourself, is sharing what you have, your talents, your creativity, your compassion with people that really, really need it.
I feel like I'm doing something good for the community. I feel like I'm really helping people.
A gift for many that will help carry some hope throughout the year. In downtown Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
The LA mission opened in 1992 and has been holding this event ever since. Well, turning now to families who don't own a computer. It can be really tough, especially when children can't do homework online. Many times, students have to travel miles away from home to the nearest library to get their work done. But that's about to change for many families in Pacoima who received free computers thanks to the city. Gil Reyes has more from Pacoima. Gil?
Yana, the city's innovative computer giveaways have taken place in communities like Reseda, South LA, and so many others. But this is the first time in the community and home of Roca Ricci Valens, actor Danny Trejo, and so many other greats. 100 free computers with Wi-Fi here in the great community of Pacoima.
Hey, what's your name? Hey Natalie, here you go.
LA City Council President Herb Wesson helps to hand out free computers to families gathered at Pacoima City Hall. The technology will go a long way in helping Walter Hernandez and his family.
Definitely. It's gonna be a lot because we don't have no internet and we're thinking to get it, but they're too expensive.
But these devices cost nothing. Hernandez can thank the OurCycle LA program. OurCycle takes outdated LA City Department computers and instead of throwing them away, repairs them for families in need. So kids can do online homework and so much more.
Yes, 100 computers with Wi-Fi, the complete system, monitor, peripherals, Windows 10, full office suite.
Every kid should have a computer and free internet access.
Councilman Wesson and the city's Information Technology Agency came up with the concept two years ago. And since then, thousands of families have benefited. The city's General Services Department stores the computers in a downtown LA warehouse where they await repair and distribution.
Hoping to have the ability and the opportunity to go out to every council district and make sure everyone that needs them to have one.
But I want to kick off a program that I'll do at the beginning of the summer where we're gonna try to provide computers to every child in the city of Los Angeles that needs computers. And I'm gonna try to get as much help as I can from the private sector and I want to give away thousands and thousands.
Did you want to say anything else?
No. Thank you very much for this, like for the computer we really, really need it.
Thank you so much.
And we appreciate everything that he's doing for us and like it's great.
In Pacoima, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Low-income students from Pacoima Charter and San Fernando High School were among those chosen to receive the technology. Well, how many ways can you love Mother Earth? The Tarzana Earth Day celebration serves as a reminder for the many ways and many reasons to give the planet a little TLC. Anna Marcos takes us there.
On this day, there is more green taking center stage and lots more kids of all ages carting trees and plants home.
I'm a tree lover. You know, the reason I live in this community because you know, this is a green, green community and I love it.
But tree-loving isn't the only thing going on at the 6th Annual Earth Day Celebration in Tarzana. This is a time to celebrate all things nature, like the birds, the bees, and the butterflies.
We're urging people to plant native plants to feed the butterflies because most caterpillars can only eat native plants. And then if we feed butterflies, caterpillars, then we support baby birds. So only natives support the ecosystem and they also use 80% less water.
We want people to understand the greatness about environmentalism and taking ownership in your community to really make it a place that'll be beautiful for everyone to grow and to learn and play.
There are Learn to Live Green demos and something for the kids, too, like this nature-loving poster contest.
The nice thing about this event, it brings the community together. It gets us to meet each other, to make friends with each other.
The big message, plant a tree or a plant or something to give back to the planet and learn to conserve water and all the resources that are becoming more and more precious on Planet Earth. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Performances, food trucks, face painting, and more were also part of the action. Well, you hear a lot about rising tuition at local universities, but not at LA's community colleges. In fact, one year's tuition is on them for high school graduates of LA Unified. Gil Reyes has more.
This pep rally at Franklin High School is getting teens pumped for college. A big incentive, zero tuition for a year.
Guaranteed seat in community college if you graduate from our school district. Is that awesome?
You heard it right. One full year of free LA Community College education for any student graduating from LA Unified Schools. This free program starts this fall semester. And it's LA high school students graduating in June who'll be able to take advantage first. The program, called America's College Promise, was launched by former President Barack Obama.
It really starts to change their way of thinking about themselves, about their community, and about their options for the future.
In the audience, undergrads from Eagle Rock, Marshall, and Highland Park High. School officials and alumni encouraging them to go to college and pursue their dreams and starting this fall at a discount.
Just keep pushing forward, like through the fear and even if it seems overwhelming, you can definitely do it. We're all up here examples that it can be done.
Many of the soon-to-be high school grads already know they're going to college.
Everyone in here is capable to reach above and beyond, to reach for the skies.
Education is the passport to the future. For tomorrow belongs to those who prepare for it today.
Don't let anything step in the way of you and your dreams and no matter what, give it your all.
Words to live by. In Highland Park, I'm Gil Reyes, LA This Week.
The Office of Mayor Garcetti raised nearly $2 million to pay for at least half the cost of the program's first year. The eventual goal is to provide free community college for all. More than 500 teachers are signing on to get art back in the schools through a project with the Getty Foundation and the LA Promise Fund. Anna Marcos has more on the debut party at Alvera Street.
So get some Micheladas in you, man. Get warmed up. Let's have a good time. And it's all about art tonight, right?
This is an invitation for LA schoolteachers to knock back a drink, have a popsicle, grab some guacamole, and sign up to spread art. In this case, Latino art in the schools.
And then they'll be able to put some lesson plans together so that they can bring the art into their classrooms.
The Getty Foundation has teamed up with LA schoolteachers and the LA Promise Fund for its new project, Pacific Standard Time LA LA, which opens in California museums in the fall. It's an exhibit on the work of Latino and Latin American artists.
People think they may know, or they may think they know, Latin American and Latino art and their minds will be blown by the variety of art that they'll, that will be on view. So they'll get a greater understanding of the cultural heritage that really is, you know, more than 50% of the population traces its roots to Latin America.
To get students and teachers connected to art, Getty organizers are handing out grants to pay for teacher training and museum field trips. There's also grant money for an art challenge where students create their own works of art.
Students all across Southern California will get the opportunity to see artworks that reflect themselves.
I'm the burnt skid marks left at the crossroad, the corners where the homies once stood.
A little spoken word, just another outlet for creativity. These teachers are soaking in the vibe as they get ready to put art back into the three Rs. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Organizers estimate only about 3% of class time in LA schools is spent on teaching creative arts. Well, turning now to a lesson on the environment, volunteers have finished planting hundreds of trees to replace hundreds of others killed off during years of drought. Gil Reyes reports on this long-term investment in Elysian Park.
These volunteers believe one day, all this hard work will pay off.
A lot of steps to remember and trying to dig up the hole in dirt. This looks pretty tough, but I can do it.
Volunteers planting more trees today in Elysian Park. It's the last in a series of plantings sponsored by the company Boise Paper and led by the city's tree planting campaign known as City Plants.
325 trees total through three different plantings that we started in the fall, but we've lost hundreds of trees in Elysian Park because of this drought over the past several years.
So Councilman Mitch O'Farrell says it's important to replace the trees we've lost for scenery, shading, and for the survival of area wildlife in the city's oldest park. Planters in Elysian Park are testing out a relatively new technique using biodegradable boxes, also known as landlife cocoons. Filled with water, sealed, and then buried with the tree roots, these extra steps are believed to greatly increase a tree's chances of survival. Protective mesh is also buried to ward off any gophers.
Our patience will be rewarded and our kids will have a greener city than the one that we received.
We shall see when these eucalyptus, peppermint gum, pine, and desert willow trees reach maturity in about 15 to 30 years. In Elysian Park, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
The German company that makes Landlife Cocoon says they can increase a tree's survival rate by as much as 95%. From planting trees in the community to planting trees in your backyard, the city is giving residents in Sherman Oaks free trees to help keep the planet green. Anna Marcos shows us what it's all about.
Springtime is definitely in the air in Sherman Oaks as the Say Hello to Spring Tree Giveaway hands out 250 baby plants so residents can plant fruit and shade trees in their own yards.
Oh, I'm gonna do it, totally. I'm just gonna like dig a hole with my dad and then we're just gonna put it into the ground.
Well, what about me?
And water it every day.
I'm gonna help, too.
Actually Carmen, the woman who works at the post office when she was delivering mail said, hey, they're giving out free trees down in the park. So my roommate and I came down and adopted one.
I think it's a great event. It's like welcoming the spring, this beautiful weather, and it's great having the community come out here, get a tree.
The Tree Giveaway is a joint effort by the city, the Department of Water and Power, the Sherman Oaks Neighborhood Council, and City Plants. The city holds about 100 of these events a year, handing out 20,000 trees, a win-win for residents and for Mother Earth.
And we really do care about the environment and conservation and we're anxious for people to plant trees.
A young tree, like the ones that we're giving away today, will use about 15 gallons of water a week and that is about the amount of one five-minute shower. It's actually a really great way to keep your yard green. Trees have a life cycle just like everything else and a lot of LA's beautiful older trees are actually getting to a point where they're starting to pass away due to old age. So it's really, really important that we continue to plant new trees.
In return, residents get shade, beauty, and a better and cleaner planet. And it all starts with a tiny one of these. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Residents at the event also got free mulch and free rain barrels as well as other water and power conservation gadgets. Well, new rules for the LAPD as officials attempt to reduce use-of-force confrontations. The city helps residents clean out their garage and protect the environment at the same time. And city officials encourage folks to be prepared in case of a disaster. All these stories in City Beat. The Los Angeles Board of Police Commissioners approved new policies that call on officers to use more de-escalation techniques before resorting to deadly force. The changes come amid a heightened focus on police shootings, both in LA and across the country, as the commission has worked to decrease the number of deadly encounters between officers and the public. One of the changes states that officers shall attempt to control an incident by using time, distance, communications, and available resources in an effort to de-escalate the situation whenever it is safe and reasonable to do so. Police Chief Charlie Beck voiced support for the policy change, which he said was negotiated with the Los Angeles Police Protective League, the union representing rank-and-file officers. Union leaders had voiced concern over the changes when they were first brought forward. Council District 1 and LA Sanitation hosted an oil recycling and collection event at the Montecito Heights Recreation Center. The city holds these events in different areas several times a year as a service to the community. Folks were able to drop off old TVs, computers, cell phones, used motor oil, oil filters, and old paint.
There's nowhere to throw it away and you shouldn't be putting it into your drains and you shouldn't be putting it down your sink. You should drop it off somewhere where people can take care of it.
An emergency preparedness expo was held recently in Century City. The expo featured vendor tables with information about keeping safe during disasters. Officials from the Los Angeles Fire and Police Departments, along with the American Red Cross and Community Emergency Response Teams, or CERT, were on hand providing information on how folks can prepare and become trained to handle a disaster.
As in the event of a large-scale emergency like an earthquake, people need to realize that we're not there for them. We're gonna be busy taking care of the big stuff and you have to learn to take care of yourself.
Because again, you know, always be prepared for something to happen, earthquake or disaster. You know, make sure that you have clothing, you know, additional food or whatever in your car. Let people know where you're at at all times.
Step by step, Angelenos are working to reduce our need for imported water. The latest creation, so-called rain gardens in South LA. Anna Marcos shows us what they're all about.
One, two.
And just like that, with a shovel full of dirt, a new rain garden is born. The University Park Neighborhood Rain Gardens project helps capture more water for a thirsty city and it will help make this corner of South LA a little greener and more sustainable.
It also is an opportunity for us to join sidewalk repair with water conservation. And what they do is help us prepare our city for the future so that we can capture the water that we do get.
The so-called rain gardens are planters built into the curbside which grow native grasses and plants. They help redirect stormwater runoff from the street and allow it to seep into the ground to be cleaned and filtered by plants and soil. Then it seeps back into the water table.
The two areas that are most opportune for doing green infrastructure are the Northeast Valley and South LA. That's because both of these areas are geographically located above our groundwater basins and so we can actually do infiltration in those areas.
And what you see here before you today is a great example of how we're gonna transform our relationship with water.
For the neighbors, added bonuses, a more beautiful street, and a better quality of life.
We get to see the neighborhood start improving bit by bit and we like it.
The young school kids that walk past every day, we can talk to them about how to save the community because they're the next generation of kids, the young people that's gonna grow up.
And the greening of the streets is about to spread. City leaders will build 35 of these rain gardens in South LA. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Head out for a fishing trip in the city. A lineup of puppets takes center stage at the Skirball and Asian filmmakers show off their cinematic skills. All this and this week's Things to Do. Get your kids hooked on fishing at the Lincoln Park Youth Fishing Derby. Fishing rods, reels, tackle, and bait will all be provided if you don't have your own. The event is free for kids 15 and younger. The Youth Fishing Derby takes place at Lincoln Park Lake on April 29th from 8:00 AM to noon. The park is located at 3501 Valley Boulevard. Celebrate the art of puppetry and the power of stories at the Skirball's annual Puppet Festival, featuring new and classic tales told with a delightful array of puppets, live music, and art-making. This campus-wide, day-long festival brings together talented puppeteers and artists working in a range of cultural and artistic styles, from shadow puppets to giant pageant puppets. A day of imaginative storytelling is sure to amaze visitors ages 2 to 102. Don't miss the special festival finale performed by Noah's Ark storytellers and puppeteers. It all takes place on Sunday, April 30th from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. For more, visit skirball.org. The 33rd Los Angeles Asian Pacific Film Festival kicks into high gear. Since 1983, the festival has presented nearly 5,000 films, videos, and digital media works by Asian international and Asian Pacific American artists. And additionally, features seminars and panels, in-person guest appearances, and filmmaker awards. The festival continues to be the largest festival of its kind in Southern California and is the premier showcase for the best and brightest of Asian Pacific American and international cinema. It all takes place April 27th through May 4th. For more, visit festival.vconline.org. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from All of Us here at LA This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
During California's next major earthquake, an epic battle will take place. Don't fight a brick. The brick will win. DareToPrepare.org.
Need a recycling center? Call 311, the toll-free number for non-emergency services. 311, your one call to City Hall. Illegally parked cars? Call 311, the toll-free number for non-emergency services. 311, your one call to City Hall.
Hi, I'm Chris. I'm an Ayengar yoga teacher here in Los Angeles. And you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Namaste.
Ms.
Approval of the minutes.
Englander moves, Corret, seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Harris Dawson moves, Bonin, seconds, continue.
Mr. President, Department of Building and Safety recommends that Items 1B and 1O be received and filed in as much as the liens have been paid in full, and that Item 1L be received and filed in as much as the lien has been rescinded by Char—excuse me—by the Department of Building and Safety.
So ordered.
That brings us to Items 1 through 8. They are items noticed for public hearing.
Do you have cards?
Yes, sir, cards on all items.
Okay, continue.
Items 9 through 13 are items which public hearings have been held.
Specials. Let's prepare to vote on these items. Let's, uh, Mr. Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 and ayes.
Continue.
Mr. President, Items 14 through 40 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are before this body. Mr. Bonin.
1 special for technical correction.
21 for Mr. Bonin. Any—Mr. Rue.
Hold 24, please.
24 for Mr. Rue. Do we have cards?
Yes, sir, cards on all items.
Okay, then let's continue.
Mr. President, Item 41 is an item scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold it on the desk?
I think we'll hold that for right now, so let's hold that. That brings us where?
Mr. President, that takes counsel to presentations or items called special.
Thank you. Let's do Mr.—uh, let's start off with the multiple items. We'll start with Mr. Herman. If I could get his items on my screen. 1, 14, 15, 14 through 40. So, Mr. Herman.
I want to thank you, Mr. Fabel, City Attorney, under the hearing of protest of appeals—
The Speaker is not speaking to any of the agenda items, Mr. President.
Just get—Mr. Herman, just stay on your items.
—to the Building and Safety Department's report and confirmation of lien for nuisance abatement costs and noncompliance of code violations. They're unconstitutional, Mr. Fuhr, and you must stop and decease these illegal liens.
What did he mean by that, Herman?
Well, usually what he means by that is—
The rookie says that under objection relative to the proposed lien, it's called a nuisance abatement, which implies there's costs and fees for noncompliance. But I regulate noncompliance in my first constitutional right under the Building—of Building and Safety, and this is my expression of it. Now, I'm going on to the next items in the back of the page. You see, Rookie, number 36, motion of Rue and Price, the bigamist, relative to the funding of services associated with Herman Oak neighborhood. Who would ever guess that you would name Sherman Oaks after Herman? Absolutely, $1,824 for the Assembly Bill 1290? Go back, Herman. Let me—let me speed dial back.
Now that we've transferred appropriate funds for this account, what business do we have with the golf course? What relationship should conspire here? Is it abuse? Is it waste? Is it fraud? Is it transgender violations? I don't know, but that's for you to decide. Now, I'm going on to my final minute on topic, asshole. Item 40, Englander, relative funding the Highland Park Mosaic project.
Well, yesterday, we had a presentation, and the Jews said, "We're getting along. Let's bring peace and take the dark night out of the picture." He's evil. He's really evil.
Mr. President, Speaker is veering off topic.
On account to number 28121CD, redevelopment projects, on behalf of all the homeless and their unconstitutional violations against the City of Los Angeles, I say to you on their behalf, what my First Amendment, my 14th Amendment, as a suggestion, peacefully protesting, change the order. Change the order of your transition plan and give homeless a new look.
Okay, give him his minute. This is your general public comment minute.
Now, I don't give a fuck what the city attorney says about me sitting here, talking to myself. Just because people have disabilities, that dumb schmuck up there, yeah, you rookie, you rookie. I can fast-forward, rewind, and do what the fuck I want when there's no agenda or no meeting taking place. This is my building. I'm a taxpayer. I'm a rate holder here. So when you think of the Ralph and Brown Act, this is what I think of it. Fuck you, because I'm exercising my legislative right under the sovereignty of the United States and the Constitution of my 14th Amendment. So stop fucking with me with my MH, my DIS, and my fucking service dog, you piece of shit. You get it? Did you get it? Did you get it?
No, Herman, I don't get it. You just make a fool of yourself standing here.
No, I don't, because I'm protesting against that white nigger city attorney.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, why don't we go now to, uh, Mr. Spindler? What's—uh, bring him up on the screen. 1A, B, C, D. In fact, all the way. Uh, all of that, then you can—yeah, it's Item 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 8, 14, 15. Go on, Mr. Uh—you run out of time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pimp. Now, liens, number 1? Fuck you, I don't want liens. No more liens. Everybody wearing denim, no more liens. And I notice there's liens in CD 8. Why? No more liens. Then we have number 2, number 3, lighting districts. Yes, I support lighting districts, see? Because we're going to stop sexual predators in the other districts with lights, except we need more lighting in CD 6, because CD 6 is ran by a pimp, Nuri Martinez, and they need more lighting for the—to show the girls. So they need more lighting in CD 6 to support the pimp, Nuri Martinez, and her pimp staff. What a shame. Also, we need lighting in the ghetto, because when you're buying a rock, you need to see what you're buying before you give the dealer your cash. Now, I don't recommend testing it first, but you know, buy it, see it. So now, we get to the other things. Let's go to 38. Look, the 100th Annual Men's City Golf. Why aren't women allowed to play in the golf tournament? You sexist fuckers, why? Why are we spending money on a goddamn programmatic access activity that does not allow women? That's illegal. We cannot use public funds on 38 unless it's open to women, gays, and puppets who play golf, and I play golf. And also, the council president plays golf. He's a 20 handicap, he's a pretty good player. So now, we have the Public Works Royal Room being used on 38? For what? Some stupid bullshit involving the rotunda? We don't want $261. $261? I can go in the rotunda for free. All of you can go there right now for free. Why do you charge us $261 to use the rotunda, you fucking thief? It's not allowed, it's a public place. Also, additional enforcement services for the Hollywood sign. Fuck you, David Rue. You fucked up the sign for Hollywood. We cannot go to the sign anymore because of David Rue and the terrorism against the access to the Hollywood sign. Fuck you.
Give him his one minute.
So, we have Denim Day. Denim Day for what? For what? We have two councilmen on record sexually harassing their staff. Jose Wezar pays off a woman. Mitchell Englander pays off a woman. In this building, two of our councilpeople have sexually harassed women working for them. How the fuck can you have an event against that when you do this here in the building? Sexual violence, not on my campus. This place is filled with sexual predators, filled with people engaging in sexual misconduct. And then we got Nuri, who has people in her office opening strip clubs, paying off dealers, paying off pimps. It's the biggest fucking pimp on the West Coast, Nuri Martinez, the pimp.
Let's give Mr. Walsh. Mr. Walsh, please come forward. Items 1A, B, 2, 21, 22, 26, 27, 36, 37.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or JWalshConfidential. 1 and 2, this is, uh, concerns, Building and Safety and Lighting. You're doing a good job. When you do a good job, I don't curse at you. I don't curse at anybody, uh, in front of this microphone. Number 21 is, uh, an important issue. This is, uh, public auction. They buy property, they eminent their main property for a developer, then they sell it on a public auction at a price—bottom of—the barrel price to the developer. Number 22, this is, uh, contract with Turner Jenkins Gale Martinez on services, Proposition Q Projects. This is, uh, not to exceed $18 million. Of course, you can't do the job, and I want to say to all my relatives in Switzerland, where I come from, I want you to make sure you don't bring the Olympics to this city, because if you do, it's going to cost you tens of millions of dollars in settlements, if not hundreds of millions of dollars in settlements. Because this is the settlement capital of the world. Number, uh, 20—27, uh, this is eviction rights. Yes, we don't, uh, vote for this. If you vote for this, thank you, because we don't have any really strong eviction rights tenants in this city. Mr. Don Lu, Executive Director, Department of Convention and Tourism. They're going to go in the back room. You know why they're going to go in the back room? To decide how much to give him. That's no reason to go in the back room for salary. It's no damn reason for going back there. And I can tell you right now, and The Times is sleeping on this, he's going to get all told $400,000, Mr. Don Lu, because he's on his knees in front of Glenn Dake and Garcetti, the two lovers who run the city. And, uh, I'm telling you right now, number 30—36, Sherman Oaks Neighborhood Council, movie—in—movie in the park, uh, 29. We don't need movies in the park. Uh, and I—I will make a present of these 25 seconds to you, because I don't have to get up here and jerk off with the full minutes. I don't need to jerk off like you jerk offs. Okay, uh—
Give him his one minute for—
Give me my one minute.
—general public.
Okay, we got a great group here. We have a bigamist over here, over here, Curran Price. Uh, he—his next wedding is going to be, uh, uh, he hasn't decided between two or three people. He's married to Del Richardson, he's married—he's married to everybody. And you had a denim, uh, party downstairs, and you—uh, and you know what? They came out courageously. Don't beat up women at gay bars. And I just want to say to any woman who tries to get into a male gay bar in this city or in West Hollywood, you're not allowed in, because you don't have—all you have is a vagina. If you have a dick, you're allowed into the gay bars in this city, but otherwise, you're not allowed into the gay bars in this city. I'm telling you right now, Switzerland, do not bring the Olympics here, because it's going to cost you hundreds of millions of dollars in settlements. Because this city is going to declare bankruptcy.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Mr. Previn, Eric Previn, bring him up on my screen, Mr. Previn. Is this Mr. Previn? Okay, 1A, B, C, D, okay, all the way up to P, 18, 21, 22, 23, 24, 5, 7, 30, 33, 35, 37, 39. Go ahead, Mr. Previn.
Uh, thank you, Council President Weston. It is Eric Previn from, uh, the 2nd District. I live in Studio City. Uh, today, CD 8 and CD 12 each have approximately $12,000 in pernicious liens against their residents, so they are—they're doing a very, very nice job there. There are 14 separate liens today, so you've gone back to your robust, uh, approach. And CD 7, sir, where you are sort of wearing the hat but not really while endorsing a candidate in that race, um, it—we're moving forward. Item number, uh, 18, in my district, we're going to take a closer look. There's a lighting district at Tahunga and Landale. I'll get back to you on that. Item number 13, you've got, um, the LA Police Foundation accepting some ballistic shields. Well, that is so sweet. From whom?
Mr. President, we already voted on number 13.
Oh, I'm sorry, sir, I didn't realize that. Thank you. Item number 39 is the upcoming Tefra hearing in Sierra Canyon. You remember the big football team that was in here last week during the mega presentation? They are being, uh, issued $55 million bond. We don't—we don't have anything to do with it other than facilitating it. And Englander, what a moving speech to that group that started this little nursery school and became a major recruiting football team that—that is Sierra Canyon, where they have a—a trustee who actually discloses he's a trustee when he donates. This is outstanding, because at Harvard-Westlake, the trustees refuse to—to don’t—to disclose, which is a big problem. Item 22, sir, Prop Q. This is one of the prop propositions or things where the voters approve them, the money is earmarked, the city spends it, uh, often to get general obligation bonds, which is a way to make the money go further. And, uh, this is for 18 million for a group called Turner JGM. And this is for eighteen million for a group called Turner JGM. Bonds is the key operative word. Yesterday, as we discussed, Richard Llewellyn, your CAO, was working on some of the bond work. And I'll address it in my general public comment, since it's not on the agenda now. Item number twenty-one, we have Earlham, five, one-five-two-zero-six, Earlham Boulevard. It's being auctioned off, piece of property in the Palisades over by, in Bonin's district. Now, it's May twenty-fourth. Make a note, listeners, at 2:30 PM that they're going to have the public auction. This is very, very quick and fast. It was April seventeenth that they picked it out of the pile. Who knows why? Who knows who wants it? But they're putting it at the one-point-nine-five-million-low price to start things out, and we'll go from there. Twenty-three and twenty-four are two items with a virtual same headline, but from different factions. So I couldn't quite figure it out about affordable housing. There are a number of items that look like you're looking out for us with the rent stabilization. So we have to say appreciate that, if you are in fact doing that. And item number thirty-three is a half-a-million dollars by Wes and Krikorian, the team to beat, for, believe it or not, I believe it's the medians. We're going to landscape our medians. Three-hundred thousand for labor, two-hundred thousand for the benefits therein. So wow. I mean, is that the priority right now, landscaping of the medians? I guess it is important to certain districts and groups. I just don't know. I find that slightly problematic. Item number thirty-seven, we have the enforcement up at Hollywood sign. Mr. Rue is going for a second bite of the apple, I believe. But it's from eighteen to twenty-four of April, so that's in the past. Is this a retroactive?
Give him his one minute for general public comment.
Sure. Thank you, sir. At the Claims Agenda meeting last week, there was a terrible bicyclist injury that I believe is coming forward to match the nine-point-five-million-dollar settlement from last week, where there was a pedestrian disaster near Dockweiler. I would just look closely at what's going on there. And while Mayor Garcetti was tickling the ivory to the La La Land music yesterday, and the wind was blowing, Richard Llewellyn, as I said, was up in fifteenth floor in a very closed-door meeting, denying answers to questions from the public, like, what is the city administrative fee on a three-point-five-million-dollar, non-city-owned project? We're not answering. And then, as you know, Mitch Englander went on Conan Nolan's show and said, we're not doing judgment obligation bonds. But I think that's inaccurate. So I would ask that the city attorney correct what Mr. Englander said on television to the constituents, which was misleading. Because I think we are still moving forward with that plan. Correct me if I'm wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. That ends the multiple portion of the public comment. But at this point, I want to... Okay, why don't we do items fourteen through twenty? And then, on those items, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Ms. Martinez, are you, do you want to begin?
All right, good morning. Good morning, Mr. President. What started as a single unjust court ruling has become an international movement. Today, I'm proud to stand in support of Denim Day. When I look at the sexual assault statistics, I'm amazed. One in three women around the world will be raped, beaten, coerced into sex, or otherwise abused in their lifetime. Fifty-four percent of rapes are never reported. Only one in four rapes ever leads to an arrest. It pains me that over the last year, it feels as though our society has made a complete one-eighty degree turn. And has moved towards normalizing rape and sexual assault culture. When you have a president publicly tell the world that he thinks it's okay to grab women and sexually harass them, it has a way of trickling down to the general public. Powerful men have tried to normalize sexual assault, and he is not the only one. Turn on the news and see one powerful man after the other paying a woman, a woman out for sexual harassment or sexual assault that they have inflicted on them. If it's happening at the highest levels of corporate America and in the entertainment world, you can imagine how prevalent it is in our vulnerable communities. This new administration has given us a lot to worry about. But one of the things that worries me the most is that the immigrant population within our city is retreating into shadows and not reporting incidences. We have already seen that LAPD is currently seeing a drop in the reporting of domestic and sexual assault crimes within the undocumented immigrant community due to their fears of being deported. When you hear about parents being detained outside of their children's schools, you can see that this is the very reality that a lot of our immigrant communities have to deal with every day. Why would a victim want to come forward if there is a chance that in the process of reporting the crime, they unwillingly shine a light on their immigrant status? Every day, immigrants write the mass transit system across our city and county. Fifty percent of our riders have reported being sexually assaulted or harassed at some point on the public transit system. I worry that these statistics disproportionately affect our most vulnerable young women and immigrants. The female immigrant who is the single mom or student that uses a public transit to get to work, to school, or just to commute around town. Everyone who writes the public transit system is just trying to go about their business. But what we know is that oftentimes, these victims and the public choose to accept the harassment as just another byproduct or consequence of riding mass transit. But this is completely wrong. We need to stop normalizing this behavior and stop accepting it as an inconvenience of using the system. If we normalize sexual harassment on the transit system and normalize sexual harassment in the workplace by employing TV personalities, when will it ever stop? So my hope is that with LAPD taking on the role of providing security on our transit system within our city, that we will be able to make an impact on this issue and make this a priority. I call on LAPD to ensure that we are monitoring the data on number of sexual assault cases and harassment that takes place on our metro transit lines within our city. And that they make an effort to reach out to the immigrant community, who is afraid of speaking up and reporting incidents when they occur. I want to see reports go up, because there is more, not because there's more harassment or assaults, but because people are finally accept, finally stopping this, finally put a stop to accepting this behavior and saying, no, this is not okay. Because there is never an excuse or an invitation for sexual harassment. Riding the bus to work is not an invitation. Waiting for the bus at a bus shelter is not an invitation. A crowded subway car is not an excuse. And no matter what I wear, that is never an invitation to rape, sexually assault, or harass me. And I'd like to introduce Patty Giggins of Peace Over Violence to say a few words and introduce our next speaker. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Nuri, Councilmember Martinez, for being a champion on this issue and all the intersectional issues relating to sexual violence and domestic violence. This is our eighteenth Denim Day. I'm so pleased to be here in front of you again, representing Peace Over Violence, and to appreciate the collaboration we have with our city council, with our mayor, with all of the departments in the city and the county of Los Angeles. Millions of people around the world today are wearing denim or wearing jeans on purpose, with purpose. And to put out the message, just as the councilwoman said, that there is no excuse and never an invitation. And what is, what is going to make violence prevention really viable? Are the partnerships and the collaborations that we do have in our city and in our county? And it's through partnerships that we are able to make institutional change and include everyone on this issue, so that we make sexual violence come out of the shadows, so that victims are not relegated to the margins where they are shamed and blamed. That is one of the main goals of Denim Day, to support survivors. The other goal is to prevent it in the first place. So I want to appreciate all of the support from the City of Los Angeles Council. And you've been with us from the very, very beginning. The, I want to give a shout out to an amazing partner, and that is Guess Incorporated, the fashion company. They've been partnering with us for over four years. And as I've said many a time, Peace Over Violence has a voice with Denim Day, but it is really amplified into a megaphone with the voice of Guess. Because they are out there educating their customers worldwide. This is an international fashion company, and their home base, their headquarters is here in Los Angeles. And so, because of Guess, we have been able to reach many, many, many more people with our messages and to create education. And while we're doing that, what's happening is we're educating the jury pool. We're letting survivors know that we are there for them and that we believe them, and that violence is preventable. The main, the other message that I want to say today for this year's Denim Day is that, and I know you all agree, sexual violence is not welcome here. Not in our city. Not on our campuses. Not on our buses, not on our subways, not on our metros, not in our neighborhoods, not on our sports teams, not in our locker rooms. And locker room talk is not welcome either. And that ultimately, sexual violence, sexual harassment, sexual molestation, rape, not welcome in the city and the county of Los Angeles. And I so appreciate your support. I have two people, one I just want to introduce and appreciate, who never get a chance to come here. But I'd like to introduce Janine Williams. Janine Williams is the chief of the Sexual Assault Unit, the Governor's Office of California Emergency Services. They are the folks who fund the eighty-four sexual assault centers in the state of California, and the eight serving the city and county of Los Angeles. So she came to a conference, wanted to introduce.
Hi, thank you, Patty. Yes, I'm from the California Governor's Office of Emergency Services. I'm the chief of the Sexual Assault Unit. We fund all eighty-four rape crisis centers, and I am always continually inspired and amazed at the work that they do for survivors. And thank you, and I'm honored to be asked to come today. And we will always support our rape crisis centers to continue to benefit survivors.
Thank you so much. We produced the story of Denim Day, the Denim Day Effect, and I hope we brought one for everyone, little packets, I hope you get them. Now, it's my great pleasure to introduce a very authentic voice, someone who's been an advocate and a voice over violence, Claudia Batres Flores.
Good morning. Excuse me. I've been an advocate for close to ten years, and it took me nearly as many years to share with others that I had experienced sexual violence myself. As an advocate, I was listening to survivors, validating their feelings, telling them that I believed them, and that it wasn't their fault. All things I also felt about myself, and which I would have loved to hear as a seventeen-year-old girl who was raped. I never talked about, never talked about my rape, not with my family, friends, or colleagues. It wasn't until I heard another survivor share their own story that I witnessed the power of storytelling. Which is that you can talk about your trauma in a way that empowers yourself and others. As a current employee for the City of Los Angeles, I am proud to know that my employer supports the Denim Day campaign and survivors. We know that there are many people worldwide who may still bear the weight of their assault in secrecy. When we are able to talk about sexual and domestic violence in all settings, from children in schools to adults in the workplace, we allow space for some of the shame that survivors feel to dissipate. By participating in campaigns such as Denim Day, the public learns that there is no excuse and never an invitation to rape. The culture begins to shift from blaming victims to supporting survivors and educating on the myths surrounding sexual violence. I share my story with you today because it is necessary for us to create safe spaces for survivors to share their experiences. When a survivor tells you their story, listen, believe, and support them. Thank you.
Members, I want us to give Claudia a big round of applause for her story and her courage here this morning. Thank you very much. And so proud of her being part of our city family. With this, I want to present our resolution to Peace Over Violence, declaring April twenty-six as Denim Day, and reminding everyone to wear jeans today, and communicate the message that there's never an invitation to assault, rape, or harass anyone. Thank you very much.
And Ms. Martinez? Ms. Martinez, I'd like to call on Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you, Ms. Martinez, for arranging this presentation again this year. Claudia, thank you so much for your courage and for sharing your story with all of us, and letting people know that what happened isn't what defines you. It's how you respond to it and what you've done with it. I want to thank you for your courage. Ms. Martinez, I want to thank you not just for doing this presentation, but for highlighting the problem of sexual harassment on our transit system. In a recent survey, about twenty-nine percent of the people who use Metro, or twenty-nine percent of the people surveyed said they're reluctant to use Metro because they feel unsafe. And one in fourteen of them have reported being touched, or fondled, or groped. And as a Metro board member, it's something I take very seriously, because my niece was visiting me, my teenage, high school teenage niece was visiting me two summers ago, and took Metro downtown to her internship every day. And over the course of six weeks, she reported being harassed three separate times. Which is why I want to thank you for bringing Patty and Peace Over Violence in today, because they partnered with Metro on a reporting hotline. It's eight-four-four Off Limits. It's twenty-four hours a day. Folks, council is available in English and in Spanish. We have a long way to go at Metro to address this problem on our buses and on our trains. But I want to thank Peace Over Violence for the contribution that you're making to that change. Thank you. Thank you, Nuri.
Thank you, Mr. Bonin.
Thank you again, Ms. Martinez. Let's give him a round of applause. Thank you for your courage, and you're always here. It's appreciated. If you could please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote. Now, we'll go to items twenty-eight through thirty-nine. Mr. Clerk, you have that? Then let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
And, Mr. President, for item twenty-nine, council voted to approve the salary recommendation of two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand, twenty dollars and sixteen cents annually, as submitted by the mayor and approved by the Executive Employee Relations Committee for the position of Permanent Executive Director, Los Angeles Department of Convention and Tourism Development.
Thank you. So why don't we take, we have some general public comment. If I could get Jocelyn M., Janine, and Ed C. to come forward. Okay, as they're coming forward, Mr. Bloomingfield.
Acknowledge some students that are here.
Yeah.
We have a great group of students that are here from my district, from Valley Charter Academy, the Leadership Council, from Canoga Park, Mrs. Schmeff. And we have forty-seven students, from third and fourth graders that are here, ten parents. Stand up, guys. Give you guys a big welcome. Seeing the city in action, you're on, you know, smile, you're on TV, guys. And we're just, we're really glad that you're here. I look forward to talking to you in a little bit. And watch democracy in action. All right.
They're on the screen.
All right.
In action or in space action?
All right, so now we're going to go back into general public comment. Jocelyn? Good morning.
Good morning, and thank you so much for having me. My name is Jocelyn McCarthy, and I live in--
The microphone.
Can you hear me? My name is Jocelyn McCarthy, and I live in Sherman Oaks and share my home. I have a guest house that was known as a rec room that was unused, and as home sharing became more popular, I considered it. When the recession hit, I tried it, and I haven't looked back. It has provided me with safety and comfort when I'm home alone with my toddler. Just knowing someone else is there, and it's usually a grandparent visiting family in the area, helps me feel safe in my home. We help support local business and love our community. We urge the council, and especially you, Councilman Rue, who I voted for, to include rec rooms and remove the nightly cap so we can keep bringing in revenue for everyone to share in Sherman Oaks in Los Angeles. Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much. Janine?
I'm Janine Wees. I'm also from Sherman Oaks. Hello, hi. I'm a nonfiction book author and Airbnb host. I also have Parkinson's disease, which is why I'm shaking. It's not that I'm nervous. Councilmen Bonin and Corretts, in the April 18 L.A. Times article, both mention the importance of the focus on hammering out rules to discourage many hotels and crafting regulations over revenue. I ask the council to please do this while being mindful of people like me who have permitted rooms attached to my garage but not my physical house. This space would never be considered rental market housing. It is not an accessory dwelling unit. There's no kitchen, there's no separate address. This might seem a small distinction to you, but using my backyard home office as a guest space has allowed me to pay my mortgage and stay in my home of 23 years while grappling with disability. Please do not penalize me by lumping my bonus room in with accessory dwelling unit ban currently in your ordinance. Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much. Ed? How you doing? Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Ed Coleman. I have lived in Venice for 35 years, and I host a guest room. I would like to respond respectfully to Councilman Bonin's comment in a recent L.A. Times article on the proposed short-term rental ordinance that, quote, "We not let potential revenue dictate what sort of regulations we craft." The Neighborhood Committee of the Venice Neighborhood Council recommended to the VNC Board that the city's proposed ordinance should be adapted to require that hosts must reside on-site when renting part of the house, including detached guest houses, as an STR, but that such rental activities need not be subjected to a time limit. Here's an example where sensible public policy and revenue can coexist. By crafting regulations that do not put a time limit on short-term rentals, you can implement a policy recommended by the Neighborhood Council of one of the areas most affected by STRs and a policy that brings billions of dollars of economic activity directly into our communities and maximizes potential revenue for the city all at the same time. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. I thank you for your time.
Great, thank you very much. Herman, please, don't disrupt the meeting by doing that. Thank you very much. Okay, you're yelling out of the meeting now, so you've already been warned three times in this meeting, so have a nice day. Sergeants, please escort him out.
Thank you. No, I didn't, I didn't realize. It's in the village right there.
And, Mr. President--
He's still yelling out. Sergeants, please. Okay, come on.
For the record--
Herman, we do have a lot of schoolchildren here, too. I know you're respectful of at least them, if not us.
I got my child with--
Thank you very much.
I got my kids--
Herman, you're still disrupting this meeting. Sergeants?
I got my First Amendment rights--
Herman, you're still yelling and disrupting this meeting.
And for the record, he's walking backwards out of the room, obviously in an attempt to slow things down--
Well, still yelling out. Whether he's walking backwards or not, he's still yelling out, disrupting this meeting. That's considered trespassing. Okay, you're still holding up this meeting.
And, Mr. President, for the record, amending motions for item 21 and 24 have been submitted, posted, and circulated for council's consideration.
Great, let's go ahead and take up those items now. Do we have any cards for public comment on those? None? Okay, we'll go ahead and open the roll. Well, we won't open the roll. Mr. Huizar.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just ask if we could take items 23 and 27 together. I'm not sure if that was--
Yeah, we're on 20, yeah, we will.
Okay, 24 is, okay, that's fine.
We're going to reopen the roll on those items, so go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote. Thirteen ayes. Those are approved. Thank you very much. Next items, please. Yeah, Mr. Huizar, yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. And colleagues, on items 23, 2 through 27 is a package of motions that address the affordability of housing in the city of L.A. There's no question, as we all know, that the city is in a housing crisis, and with affordable housing affecting us citywide, it's also come to the direct attention of some of my constituents in Bull Heights where they have felt the impact. We have seen a number of affordable units where the rents have gone up dramatically. We have seen a number of covenants that had been protected by rent control expiring soon with very little projections or planning that had been taken place to protect them. The good news is that in Bull Heights, approximately 75% of the people living in Bull Heights are renters, and more than 88% of those are protected by rent control. But we must do more to protect our tenants in this volatile time. We have been proactive in addressing the housing shortage in Bull Heights by supplying a consistent amount of affordable units over the years, and it's probably received more affordable units than any other part of the city. But we have to do more than just increase the supply, which I think is going to go a long way. These motions that have been submitted today is to ensure that we are protecting those RSO units that are in place, is going to provide a way to better track the cumulative net gain and net loss of our affordable units across the city. It will also work to possibly implement an anti-harassment ordinance for tenants similar to other cities such as San Francisco, Santa Monica, and West Hollywood, so that we ensure that tenants are not retaliated again simply for choosing to continue to live in their homes. Lastly, each of our respective council offices should be notified when Alice Act proceedings begin in our respective districts so that we closely monitor these types of evictions as well as the impacts they have on our housing stock. These package of motions, we've been working with the Chair, Mr. Sadio, from the Housing Committee, to schedule them, and thank you for waiving them to get them to council so that we could go back to committee and get the report backs that we need. The Housing Department has agreed to work on these items immediately, and I would ask further requests at items 26 and 27 that the Los Angeles Housing and Community Investment Department report back on the processes and enforcement mechanisms that will be enacted to carry out both of these actions. I want to thank as well some community advocacy groups, Yonah Vecinos and others, who brought to our attention other policy items that we could be doing as a city to further protect our tenants in these volatile times for them. So thank you very much. I ask for your eye vote.
Oh, thank you very much. Okay, we'll go ahead, seeing no other speakers on the queue, yes.
I made a motion to have further report backs from our Housing Department, so that's just an add-on to--
So we'll just need a second.
To 26? And 26 and 27, yeah.
Second by Paul.
Mr. Corretts seconds that.
Paul Corretts seconds that, okay. Okay, with that friendly, minor change?
Pardon me, sir, if we could, if the two that have the amendments 26 and 27, if we could vote on those separately?
Okay, we'll go ahead and vote on the first one. Oh, well, Councilmember Sadio is on the queue. I'm not sure if that's an error. Did you wish to speak?
I was just going to offer the second and offer my thanks to my colleague for bringing this forward. It has our full support. He's articulated the urgent crisis that exists and the urgent need to move these things forward, these with a series of other reforms that we're moving through, both housing and plum. And so I just encourage everybody on the floor to--
Okay, so what we'll do is let's go ahead and amend that, Mr. Huizar, and have Mr. Corretts as a second and Mr. Sadio as a second second. All right. Seeing no other second, third seconds? We'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote. Thirteen ayes. All right, that's approved.
Mr. President, so that's for items 26 and 27. That leaves 23 and 25 to adopt without amendment.
Okay, we'll go ahead and adopt those without amendment as well. Do you want a separate vote on those? We'll go ahead and open the roll on those, close the roll, and tabulate the vote. Thirteen ayes. That's approved. Okay, colleagues, we're going to go ahead and reconsider 21 for a public comment card. We'll go ahead and open the roll for reconsideration on 21. Close the roll and tabulate the vote. Thirteen ayes. That item is before us. Mr. Previn, now you've got one minute. Mr. Previn, the podium's the other way.
Thank you, sir. It is Eric Previn from CD2 Studio City. This is related to the item 21. It's an amendment changing the date of the public auction hearing, which is a substantial change, and it will be moved from the date I mentioned earlier to June 14, 2017. And I believe, I believe it will be at the same location. It does not actually specify that, but let's go ahead with the fact that it will be here at Spring Street, 200 Spring Street, over at the Public Works Building. And let's move forward in the future with a system in which the amendments to these items are posted before the meeting so that--
Yeah, that's not on the items, so speak--
No, that's about this--
You can use that for general public comment, if you will.
I've already spoken, thank you, sir, for general public comment. I'm speaking about the Earlham Street auction, and I do feel that we should post amendments like that timely so that the interested members of the public have an opportunity to not blurt the wrong information. A lot of people heard me say May 24th. It's not. It's June 14th.
Well, really, because we reopened the roll, reconsidered it, just to allow you to speak for your minute, so I think--
Well, I appreciate that. So I clarified that it's June 14th. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, so now that we've been enlightened by Mr. Previn, we can go ahead and open the roll on that item. Close the roll and tabulate the vote. Thirteen ayes. Great, thank you very much. Next item, please.
Mr. President, that brings us to item 22. There are no cards on that matter.
Okay, no cards on 22. We'll go ahead and open the roll on item 22, colleagues. Close the roll and tabulate the vote. Thirteen ayes. That's approved. Next item, please.
Mr. President, that leaves item 1 and item 40. Before beginning item 1, the Department of Building Safety has made a request to continue items 1E, 1C, and 1F to May 26.
All right, without objection, we'll go ahead and approve those continuations and--
The balance of item number 1 is now before you, sir.
Okay, great. Do we have any other additional cards on item 1? Okay, Gail Warren on 1F, please. Gail Warren? Ms. Warren? Okay, no longer here. We'll go ahead and note her card. And then we have another one from Maria Correo. Good morning, ma'am.
Good morning, council. My name is Maria Correo, and I own a property on 9239 Aqueduct Avenue in the valley. It's actually North Hills. And there's a lien for 2,000, which one is it? 2,413 that may be applied to our property because of a illegal add-on that was done to our guest house. This add-on, we didn't construct. We bought the property that way in 2002. And so through, it took about three, three and a half years to finally get our house up to code, and it was because Building and Safety kept insisting that a tack room was illegal, and it wasn't. It was permitted. It was actually grandfathered in. So we, four years later, we're being now hit with a bill for 2,400, and I think that's really excessive. There's no way my husband and I can afford that.
Okay, ma'am, so this is what we're going to do. What I'd like to do is, this seems a little more complicated than the norm. This isn't a matter of, well, it seems a little more detailed. So I'm going to ask, if we can, that we continue, well, we're in the middle of budget and finance as well. Let's continue this for one month, and I'd like for you to work with my office directly.
Okay.
Okay? So if you'll go give her some information.
But in the meantime--
So in the meantime, we're not going to do anything for a month. We're going to bring it back in a month. Stephanie on my staff is going to meet you over here on the side, and then we'll meet with Building and Safety and find out exactly what's going on and some of the claims and suggestions that you're making.
Right. I mean, because my husband and I--
We can't have a dialogue, unfortunately, because you had your one minute. So I'll continue. I heard you loud and clear.
Okay.
Being very responsive, and so we'll go ahead and continue it for that one month, but that'll give us the opportunity to weigh in and work with you--
Okay.
--and see what we can do to help, okay?
And, Mr. President, that's May 26.
No lien on our house at this time, right?
So about May 26, okay?
But no lien on our house--
No, nothing right now.
Okay.
Nothing in, we're not going to make a decision to do anything for a month, and that'll give us the time to do the appropriate research and work with you in the various departments.
Okay, thank you.
Fair enough. She'll be right over here. Thank you so much. Okay. Any other items or cards? We have one. Sven Butcher? No? Okay, no other cards. Okay, so with that, we'll go ahead and open the roll on the balance of item 1. Close the roll and tabulate the vote. Thirteen ayes. Great, that's approved. Next item, please.
Mr. President, that brings us to item 40.
Okay, item 40, colleagues. We have no speakers on the queue. We'll go-- Oh, we do-- I'm sorry. Okay, we do have one speaker card, Sven Butcher. A Butcher on item 40? All right, not here. Okay, we'll go ahead and file that card as well, and let's open the roll now on that item. Close the roll and tabulate the vote. Thirteen ayes. Okay, then that item's approved. Next item, please.
Mr. President, that brings us to item 41.
Okay, item 41, colleagues. No speakers on the queue. We'll go ahead--
And, Mr. President, that's an item scheduled for closed session, sir.
Oh, okay. So we'll go ahead and-- Okay, we're going to go ahead and go into closed session, colleagues, on that. So we're going to ask folks here in council chambers, sergeants, if you can clear council chambers so we can go into closed session on that item. And if there is a representative from the mayor's office, if no council members object, we'll go ahead and allow the mayor's office to have a representative. And then we do, and she'll stay. Okay. All right, welcome back to the Los Angeles City Council Public Meeting. So, that was a closed session item, and we're going to go ahead and, if we can, ask the clerk to read that item into the record so we can vote on it publicly as well.
Very good, sir. For item 41, there is a recommendation to authorize the city administrative officer to execute any necessary documents and to pay a total of $4,722,000 from budget savings from the Capital Finance Administration Fund to resolve the IRS voluntary closing agreement program. A motion is required.
Okay, we'll go ahead and, the motion's before us, and we'll go ahead and open the roll. Do you want a motion on it?
We need a mover in a second.
Yeah, so I'll go ahead and actually move that item. Mr. Huizar will second.
Very good, sir.
All right, now we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Right, that is approved, and then we're going to go ahead and reconsider item 25. So, let's open the roll for reconsideration on item 25, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
That item is now before us, and we had a number of cards. That was actually an item that flew through earlier, and for whatever reason, we actually had a glitch. We have a new system, so I apologize for all the folks out there, but now that it's digital, once in a while, we've got some bugs in the system where the cards don't come up on the specific item, so, and that's what happened in this case. And so with that, it appears that all the cards here, I don't see the individuals that they've come back, so instead of voting on it now, Mr. Huizar, what I'd like to do is continue that item for Friday to give them an opportunity. So, we'll re-agendize it, give them an opportunity for public participation. Okay, so we'll go ahead and do that, and let's go ahead and continue that item then.
And, Mr. President, that's April 28th.
Correct. Okay, April 28th. Thank you very much. All right, next item, please.
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
Okay, those are posted and referred?
The desk is clear.
Fantastic. Colleagues, do we have any announcements? Yes? Shh. We have an announcement? Councilwoman Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just remind you tomorrow, members, it's Take Our Daughters and Sons to Work Day. I encourage all of us to bring our kids, if we can, to work tomorrow. My staff will be sponsoring this year's events, and we're, we're going to be having a photo booth out in the rotunda, so if you want to bring your kids to, to work tomorrow, we can take pictures with our kids and so on. So, you've often seen me bring my Izzy to, to work, and so I think it'd be nice for those of, of us who can bring our children to work and see what we do every day, or maybe their friends, if we choose to bring other folks, perhaps if they're kids who don't always get the opportunity to come to City Hall, that would be nice. So, tomorrow, all day, we'll be sponsoring a photo booth at, in the rotunda for those of you who want to participate. Thank you very much. Have some DJ and some, you want a DJ?
All righty. So, do we have any other announcements, colleagues? Seeing none, do we have adjourning motions? Looking to my right? Seeing none, looking to my left? Seeing none. Okay, so we don't have any adjourning motions, which is always a good thing. Those are sad. And that concludes the council meeting. We are adjourned. Be safe.
I'm Jane Skeeter. I'm the CEO, founder, and president of Ultraglass. Ultraglass, Inc. is an architectural designer and manufacturer of specialty glass. We're situated in Chatsworth, in the city of Los...